Okay, it's 6:00 PM. We'll call our meeting order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call please, Marine.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bembel?
Here.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mrs. Rayl?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mr. Cranes?
Here.
Thank you, Marine. First item on our agenda tonight is the special presentation of the Friend of Education Award.
Rescheduled from December.
Thank you.
As with anything due to COVID-19.
Okay, the Board of Education is extremely pleased to present the 2021 Friend of Education Award to Dr. Lisa Olson and Dr. Amy Falk. Come on.
We'll keep it under 15 minutes.
Where are you guys over here?
Wherever you'd like to stand. Dr. Olson is a graduate of the University of Iowa Medical School specializing in family medicine. She has been a practicing physician for more than 20 years, currently working at Aspirus Doctors Clinic in Wisconsin Rapids. Dr. Olson and her husband have four outstanding children, Curtis, Adam, Sarah, and Anna, two of whom are graduates of Lincoln High School and two are currently attending. Dr. Amy Falk is an alumna of Lincoln High School. She earned her Doctor of Medicine degree from Chicago Medical School at Rosalind Franklin University of Medicine and Science. She is currently a practicing pediatrician at Aspirus Doctors Clinic in Wisconsin Rapids and also serves as an assistant clinical professor of medical school regional campuses in central Wisconsin for the Medical College of Wisconsin. Dr. Falk and her husband Peter are the proud parents of Evan, Ellie, and Lydia. Evan is a student in the Wisconsin Rapids Public School System. Both of these physicians have been key contributors and community partners in assisting the district in their work to prepare and plan for schools to reopen for the 2020-21 school year under the conditions of the COVID-19 pandemic. These professionals have attended countless district and school-level meetings, provided hours of key research and science-based facts to guide the process in developing precautionary mitigation measures and volunteering a great deal of time and effort to assist the district in writing and securing a sizable mask grant from the Local Legacy Foundation, which provided enough face masks to ensure that every student in area Southwood County Schools had access to a mask. Dr. Olson and Dr. Falk have also taken up the charge as key advocates and educators in the community to promote the importance of employing precautionary measures as a means to lower viral spread. They have worked closely with the schools, the local health department, and executives at Aspirus to build collaborative relationships and support in an effort to meet community needs. The contributions these two physicians have made to WRPS over the past six months have been priceless. Furthermore, the care and concern they have exhibited toward not only the students and staff members of our schools, but also our greater community is simply excellent. We are a better community when we work together and help each other. Words cannot adequately express our deep appreciation for your tireless efforts to assist us during the ongoing COVID pandemic. We are truly honored and it is with great pleasure to present each of you with this 2021 Friend of Education Award.
John, you want to do the honors for both?
Go ahead.
Get a photo of...
Dr. Amy Falk?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Lisa Olson? Thank you.
We don't have to worry about smiles.
Is there anything you'd like to say?
We just want to say thanks. We're just thrilled to be a part of you guys' team because we've been saying this since the beginning. This is all, we're all part of the same team and we really thank you for letting us be a part of this.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for, thanks Craig for the daily emails and kind of all the back and forth and we're happy to be able to help any way we can because this has been, as I've said multiple times, we've just built this ship as we've been flying it. So, you know, kind of, we'll just kind of keep on and help any way we can. Thank you.
Well, your words are very true. When we met in the summer and you said masks work, you were 100% right.
Really? You're welcome.
Absolutely. And we wouldn't be operating if it wasn't for the work of you two. So, I can't, I can't state that enough. And I share that as well. So now when I go to Aspirus, which lately has been way too frequent, I make commentary about, you know, the important doctors that I know and the work that we can do as a school. And it does, it makes a huge difference to everybody in the community. From starting from not knowing what the heck we're going to do to kind of finalizing a plan and then finding that the plan that we have implemented is actually working is unbelievable. And we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you two. So, from me to you personally, it's very, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And if you'd like now to have a little time to get a photo with your families, Marines, I'd like to take that for you.
You do first.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Mine are more patient.
Can you smile a little?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Will you send that to us?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Oh, yeah, there you see.
Nice smiles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
There's a stimulating meeting following this.
I invited them all to stay, Sandy. I invited them all to stay.
Yeah?
Yeah. I don't think we're going to take you.
We appreciate so much voices in there.
That's right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the Student Representatives Report. Rachel, how are you doing this month?
I'm doing pretty well.
Good.
So I don't have very much to report. Kind of a stretch of two years. Christmas break and spring break. Spring break and I can't, no. NHS is sponsoring a book drive for slops. NHS, we really like donating to slops. They do a lot of work in our community. And we're having competition between first hours to bring in as many children's books as we can and you'll win donuts. So, that's very exciting. I'm definitely going to be bringing in some books. We're having class registration. I don't have to worry about it, thankfully. It's in the next few weeks. We'll be receiving, or younger classes will be receiving their information this week and then they'll be applying next week. And finally, Lincoln High School Fire and Ice Week is at the end of this month. And although we can't have in-person dance, we are still having activities and dress-up days. And something exciting is that we're actually going to have opportunities to win prizes for both in-person students and virtual students. So it'll be a little bit different than homecoming. Now that we know what works and what doesn't. So, yeah.
I know there is a play this weekend as well and it's going to be broadcast on YouTube.
Yep, free to watch.
They can tune in for free. So, Rachel, next item is the approval of the minutes.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of December 14th, 2020. The Special Board of Education open and close the December 14th, 2020, and the Special Board of Education meeting of December 21st, 2020. Just a question before we second that. On the last page of the minutes, I know we discussed this, but from reading that paragraph, I can't figure it out. If we cannot go ahead and track, then the project falls through, correct?
If we don't renovate the track or update the track?
Yeah, right. Is that, is the Legacy Foundation grant contingent on the track being done?
Yes.
Okay, so if we don't get the money raised for the track and we don't have it in the account, then everything falls apart?
Well, the fundraising is for the football field turf and the quadplex, not for the track project. The track project is part of district operations and facility improvements that were intended because that was initially part of the original, this $18 million comprehensive plan where that plan has now changed. And frankly, the Legacy Foundation grant is in specifically to the quadplex and the baseball softball quadplex, with the underlying push to also get the track accomplished. Whether or not the track has, pardon me, the football field associated with the track is turfed, that is not, that's only if we raise the dollars to make that happen. The renovation of the track needs to transpire anyway if we're in our own track program. So that was the basis of that conversation.
And then we have half the cost for the football field.
That's correct.
But if we cannot generate the rest of it, does the grant fall through? I could...
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so we've got the grant, whatever.
Yes, as long as we renovate the track, which we have intentions of renovating the track anyway because it needs to be done. The turf, the football field will be turfed if we can raise another half million to get us over that, to get us over that hump, correct?
So then we're looking at having to raise 1.3 million for these two projects?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make, you know, be clear on that. It wasn't before. Thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I guess I just wanted, because I was going to ask for, maybe you can ask now, if we could get an update in our packets, like each, each update's a twice a month, could you find out just how much is coming in from those fundraisers?
Yeah, well, it's all on rapidspride.com.
Okay.
And so that's updated with regular frequency as well. Ron Rasmussen is actually helping manage that site.
Okay.
rapidspride.com. And I bring you to that fundraising site, but I will give you updates too.
That'd be great.
The most recent development will be, and what we're hoping is that a significant portion of the contributions we see are in terms of in-kind. And we don't know that until we go to bid and we receive those bids back. And those bids would transpire here. I think they're ready to go out late this week or early next. So that's in process, but there's a six-week bidding window as well. So there'll be some quiet time in between until we get what the bids are and we know what in-kind are. That applies towards the overall goal.
And I know we have a facility plan.
Yep.
Was the track, is it a part of that plan or?
Yes, it was. Yep. And what was part of it too, because I reviewed that, was a mill and overlay. And so a mill and overlay is basically they tear it up, tamp down what's there, and then put asphalt over the top and then that, you know, the rubbery, rubberized all-weather surface. So that's one option. That's significantly less than the $800,000 that I talked to you guys about. The other option is completely tearing it out, putting down new base, new asphalt, and new all-weather surface. And that would be done if our borings indicate that that's a need because of the changes at the site over time. Kind of like a road bed, right? So when they redo a road bed, they're going to identify, look, if we put new asphalt over this existing road bed, it's going to be crap in five years because of the, the road bed itself is bad. They do a similar thing as far as tracks are concerned as well. So we're looking at identifying whether a mill and overlay is appropriate, which would be, as I said, significantly less than $800,000, or a complete redo, which is in that $800,000.
If the soil will, will hold the least expensive overlay, we could do that then, right? Is the same, is it the same lifetime for it?
Yeah, absolutely. That's accurate. So that's what those borings will tell us and give us a better idea of what we're dealing with. Yeah, we should know that relatively soon, but clearly there's some limitations here now that is a long time.
Okay. Thank you.
But the, the reason that, and I guess to elaborate a bit more as I was around the topic, the reason that the projects aren't conflated is twofold. One is that that was kind of part of our overall shopping, the market as it were, for this massive project with the dome turf facility, the quadplex, the football, and throwing everything together that we had some intentions of doing at some point in the future, potentially, all together. And that's what created this $18 million project. And then when we knew that wasn't going to go, that there wasn't that willpower to make that happen, then we partnered with baseball softball folks who've been with the, you know, who've been involved for the last several years in one capacity or another and focused on that in the Legacy Foundation grant application. So the Legacy Foundation Board saw the presentation of the overall, what we wanted to do, as well as the request for just the quadplex. And then from that said, well, hey, what are the plans for the track and football field? And I said, look, if we're going to have track, we have to renovate the track. So to me, that's a district expense that if we don't fundraise for it, has to happen at some point in the future because again, we have a track program. And if you have track, you got to have track, right? So that became one of those pieces of that is going to be addressed just by course of action. Keep in mind that track is 20 years old and that is about the lifetime of a track. And then from that conversation, step into separate conversation, which said, hey, if you're, if you're redoing that track, don't you want to put turf on that football field at the same time? I'd be interested, or we'd be interested in donating a half million towards that if you can get there. So it's two separate conversations, but the Legacy Foundation would also like to see in a comprehensive fashion, more get done than just necessarily the quadplex. Does that make sense? Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes, the regular Board of Education meeting of December 14th, the Special Board of Education open and closed session of December 14th, and the Special Board of Education meeting of December 21st. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Next item is comments from citizens to delegation. Do we have anything left?
None.
Okay, thank you. First committee report is Educational Services. And the Educational Services Committee met on January 4th at 6:00 PM. There was no public comment. We have two consent agenda items. The first one was the approval of the 2022-23, 23-24, and 24-25 school calendars. Roxanne Phillips, Director of Curriculum Instruction, reviews, reviewed proposed changes to the three school year calendars, including making Martin Luther King Junior Day a professional development day, which would allow students to participate in events honoring him. And ES2 is open enrollment space determination limits for the 21-22 school year. Dr. Danny Scott, our Director of People's Services, explained how the district determines special education, open enrollment spaces for the 21-22 school year as presented in attachment B of the background. There are four spots available in speech and language. River Cities High School is unlimited as long as general education applications are being taken. So with that, committee recommends, and I move approval of ES1 and ES2.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve ES1 and ES2. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And our updates, Dr. Scott talked about the Pitch Early Learning Center update. We have plans to move forward and the staff is excited about the possible change to move early childhood in some 4K classrooms to one location. There's been multiple walkthroughs of the building with administration. Phil Bickhoff, our Director of Technology, and early childhood teachers, they're eager to be located together in one building. Dr. Scott shared a handout of the Pitch Elementary School blueprint with one area highlighted. This area was a classroom that was converted into three separate spaces and would need to be made back into a classroom. And it sounds like that's a fairly minor modification that could be done with our own staff. Jen Woolhorn, 4K Director, stated that Meet and Grow 4K classes would be relocated to Pitch. These sites can easily be moved as geographically there are other sites close by for students to attend. Busing of students was considered and since one site, students in the town of Rome already have a long bus ride to a site and in more time to bus them to Pitch wouldn't be practical. Lots of Tots is currently located at Pitch and consideration is being given to relocate one of building blocks' classrooms there also. We hope to implement this change for the 21-22 school year. Then we had an update on the Central Oaks Academy Charter School status. Jen Woolhorn, the principal of Central Oaks Academy, indicated that there are two different areas that are being assessed. Speaking to the Department of Public Instruction's concerns in moving ahead with this process of becoming a virtual charter school, a contract for the charter school is currently being developed and administration is planning to present it to the committee at the February meeting. There are already five parents willing to serve on the Governance Board. Craig added that the full board would be made aware of any letters of correspondence between the district and DPI. Sandy Head asked if parents of students at Central Oaks have been notified of the possible change. And Craig indicated they haven't yet been notified since nothing is official and is still yet in the planning stages. We have until June 30th to make the necessary updates and changes. A quick side note, the Manila folder at each of your tables that has that latest DPI letter and our response for your review. So you have that as of tonight. All right, thank you, Craig. And with that, I would move approval of the minutes from the Educational Services Committee meeting of January 4th, 2020.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes for the Health Services Committee of January 4th, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. We'll move on to Business Services. Mr. Bembel?
Thank you, John. Business Services met on January 4th, 2021 at 6:28 PM. We had no public comment out of our meeting. We had one consent agenda item, which was a 660301 cooperative agreement for a student attending the Beer and Head Start Program from the inclusive school district. And this student is already there and we require special services for language, speech and language. And since we already have a clinician there, they'll just get the, they'll just continue to learn there. And the committee recommends that I move approval of ES1.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve ES1. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Then on the remainder, we did have a purchases update and that was a very good price that Phil had gotten us on Chromebooks at a price of $219 for $1,000. And it also will be, Phil here coming? No. Delivered, or delivered in June. And I believe these are the folks for the one-to-one learning. And with that, there are, committee recommends that I move approval of minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes of Business Services Committee of January 4th, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Before we go on, I'd like to, one, introduce our new business director, Aaron Nelson. He came to our meeting. And also say goodbye to Dan. I'd like to thank Dan for all his service for this, to the school district and for all the time he has given and the money that he saved our school district. Happy trails on your bike, your mom climbing. And we like to see pictures with the haircut.
I think that's the shortest meeting on record. Didn't it three days?
Yeah, we were done at 6:30.
Your parting gift. Okay, next we have Personnel Services. Sandy?
Personnel Services met last Monday, January 4th. There was no public comment. From that meeting, we have 12 consent agenda items. And don't panic, they go through quickly. Number one, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two support staff appointments. Two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one professional staff early retirement. Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff early retirement. Four, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff resignation. I want to hold out number five. Going down to number six, these are the policies. PS6, the committee recommends and I move to approve board policy 411.1, sexual harassment, nondiscrimination in district programs, activities, and operations for second reading. This is a new policy. Seven, the committee recommends and I move to approve board policy 411.1, Rule 1, procedure for district response to alleged sexual harassment under Title 9 for second reading, a new policy. Eight, the committee recommends and I move to approve board policy 411.1, Rule 2, expectations for employees to report discrimination and harassment for second reading. This is a new policy. Nine, this is not a policy, it's a guideline. The committee recommends and I move to approve administrative guideline for second reading that will not be contained within the policies. Ten, the committee recommends and I move to approve board policy 411, student nondiscrimination and anti-harassment for second reading. This is basically saying you report it to HR and it just has more cross-references. Eleven, the committee recommends and I move to approve board policy 511, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunities for second reading, just simply has more cross-references. Twelve, the committee recommends and I move to approve board policy 511.5, employee anti-harassment for second reading. This is saying you work with HR and has more cross-references. Does anybody want any of those held up besides number five? Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve ES1 through four and six through 12. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
If we look at number five, this is the motion to approve a 1.8% wage increase to the following employee groups, psychologist, athletic director, food production coordinator, food services, school nurses, computer technicians, pack director, pack assistant coordinator, network manager, systems manager, instructional software support, confidential secretaries, van drivers, office clerical and aid support staff retroactive to July 1, 2020. What happened is, is we've left out one position, the AV coordinated position. It used to be, who ran it was under the teacher's contract. He retired. This person is no longer under the teacher's contract, so should be included with this group. So we're going to add the AV coordinated position. So do you want me to read the whole new motion?
No, that's okay.
You got it, Larry?
I got it. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve a 1.8% wage increase to the following employee groups, psychologist, athletic director, food production coordinator, food services, school nurses, computer technicians, pack director, pack assistant coordinator, network manager, systems manager, instructional software support, confidential secretaries, van drivers, office clerical and aid support staff, and AV coordinator, retroactive to July 1, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then we had an update on class size and section reports. If you were to look at from the agenda last week, you'll see it's kind of goes up and down, but we have the problem this year, people in, people out. So that if you have, for example, a lower or higher teacher ratio right now, students are lower, that can change depending on what their parents want to do. So a couple of them might look, you know, askew, but that's the rationale for it. And with that, I move that the minutes from the January 4th, 2021 meeting be approved as printed. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes of the Personal Services Committee of January 4th, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Sandy?
Before we move on, I do have a question about the registration and the class size. Are we registering based that everybody is going to be five days a week?
For next year?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we've talked about that. The only plan we can put in place right now would be that we're, we're back to normal. Yep. And boy, there's a lot of prayers in those meetings that, that is the case. I'm confident we'll be, based on what we're hearing, I'm confident we'll be okay. Next item is agenda referrals information request. Anybody have anything this month?
I just want to know, like, if we could go over, if there are certain guidelines or whatever expectations, if there's any chance that the students at the upper levels would be going down for five days a week this school year yet? And if not, what are the expectations that we're looking for in order for that to happen?
I have a meeting with Dr. Olson, Dr. Falk, and Sue Comfortman from the Health Department tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. That's going to be the topic of our conversation. And I intend to communicate that, the outcome of that conversation with you folks as well as parents in the, in the general community because that is a question that we're hearing more and more often. And frankly, it's a place we want to get to. If I'm, you know, being honest with you, the issue that, that we see is really not because we're seeing that it's super deadly and spreading like wildfire amongst students, but the problem is, is again centered around staff. And at Lincoln and Rams in particular, at full strength with all the kids attending, you're not really able to physically distance within classrooms. And unless they change guidelines around physical distancing for kids, you know, and/or kids interacting with adults, we still have that same problem. And we still have numbers in the community that are not indicative of, you know, it turning in a positive direction, although it's not as bad, I would argue, as we anticipated it becoming. So that's, that's the biggest issue. I don't know how to answer that question. That's what we're going to talk about tomorrow. That's a part of it. But if there are things that we can do to, you know, increase attendance and get our way, work our way slowly back to what, you know, something that's more normal, vaccinations are on the, you know, on the relative forefront. The rumor that I heard, it was not really a rumor, but what I heard from the Health Department was that they're hoping like in a month or two, education-related folks will be considered essential. That I have the nod on. But that those folks would be vaccinated in that timeframe. And if we do it similarly to how we do like a flu vaccination clinic here in the district, that really doesn't take a ton of time. I mean, you have open slots, you know, on a handful of days here or there. And we can work our way through the staff pending availability within a few days. I mean, it's not as massive as an undertaking as it sounds, at least here locally. The rub, of course, is a number of things that are beyond our control. So we don't have access to vaccines. We don't get to say when. It's not like the flu vaccine where we
So we don't have access to vaccines. We don't get to say when. It's not like the flu vaccine where we call our healthcare provider and say, you know, or our insurance provider and say, hey, schedule it, let's get it, you know what I'm saying? So you guys all understand that. But I think if we have staff vaccinated or those who want to become vaccinated, then that takes the whole building closure due to staff availability off the table. And you would then be able to say, look, we're five day a week and if your kids can attend, they should. If they can't, you know, here's when you log on or here's what we'll do to limp through and get through the rest of the year. That might be as soon as March sometime, but it may not be till April or May, and you know what I mean? So there's so many things that are up in the air.
You have both vaccines before it's effective though.
That's accurate. Yep. Yep. But you can have that done like within seventy-two hours of one another or something like that.
Well, it's going to be at least a week.
Uh, okay. Well, we'll get details on that, but frankly, the turnaround wouldn't be
My daughter is two weeks.
A significant hurdle.
They won't do it right away.
Yeah.
You gotta wait at least, because hers was on, yeah, she scheduled it.
I think it's two weeks right now because my daughter just had it and she had her second one. It was two weeks.
If you had a class or a school where the staff refused to get, take the vaccine, um, do you have a backup plan for that or does it?
Well, um, so there is information being gathered both, um, from the legal perspective of whether employers can require mandatory vaccinations of staff and, and the answer to that question, at least from our turn, is that yes, we could. Um, the rub that I have with that is, I, I mean, we don't require any other kind of vaccination or, you know, like influenza vaccine. And frankly, if individuals are choosing to take the risk of becoming infected with COVID-19 versus getting a vaccination, I don't think that's our call. And then if they're out, they're out and we'd have to have a sub for them, you know, when they can't be in their classroom. Ironically, most folks that are sick with COVID-19 aren't sick for like fourteen days. They're sick for, you know, several and then come back to work similar to what it would be like with the flu. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not conflating the flu and COVID-19. I'm just saying that typically there isn't extended sicknesses as a result of COVID-19. And I don't know what the disposition of contact tracing is going to be when you've vaccinated a certain amount of population as well. Because one would argue if two-thirds of us are vaccinated and we all come into contact with an infected person, some of us probably shouldn't have to quarantine, right? But I, there's no updated guidance at this phase from the CDC on that topic either. So steering back to your initial question, can we mandate it? I think the answer to that question legally is yes. The question of should we? I think the answer to that question is I'm not certain why we would. Uh, because we don't mandate any other kind of vaccinations or those kinds of requirements and a lot of people will make the decision on their own. Clearly, it would be at no cost to them. Uh, I shared with staff just recently as a, um, a result of Dr. Olson sending me a link to a Mayo Clinic podcast, and I think I sent that your direction as well, um, where a couple of doctors do a, a back and forth exchange around, uh, the vaccine and its efficacy and safety and all of these aspects. Um, and did share that with all staff as well. Got several responses saying, hey, appreciate that information, you know, it addressed some of my concerns. But, um, that's part of the problem. And I guess pointing to how all of this has transpired from a, a personal level, dating all the way back till last March, uh, up until today, and we're almost twelve months in because, uh, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're a solid ten. And you would think some of these things would be talked about and you would think some of these things would be addressed. And you would think that some of this information would be communicated and people look to folks like me and say, what the hell? And I say, yeah, I know. I don't get it either. And I talk with the health department and I talk with our medical providers and they provide some insight. But frankly, I'm telling you, everything we know right now, and if we had a panel of experts here locally, I don't think there's much more information out there. That's why I always throw the caveat out there like, who knows, you know? Um, our health department indicated that we're, they're hoping that we would have people in, in what essential workers tier would be in the next couple of months. Uh, but then I'm hearing that there's issues with getting healthcare workers vaccinated here locally. So, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know how to answer those questions. And then when you don't hear contact tracing guidelines as an easy example being updated or modified particularly for our youngest kids. So, you know, we, we've seen and we've got data on the fact of kids like younger than ten, you know, ten and under or whatever the age range is, that we don't see the same kind of spreading and the same kind of issues. Yet, contact tracing guidelines for those folks are no change. Uh, there's not any change in contact tracing guidelines for when there's mitigation efforts in place and what that mean, you know, because if some of these changes would take place, then I think organically we'd be able to make some modifications to, to how we conduct business or at least be more assisted in that regard. So, I don't know. It's a tough spot to be in. As a parent myself, and I tell everybody that talks to me about it, I got three kids that should be in school five days a week too. You know what I mean? So, um, I don't, the balance is tough.
Have parents been told that they should expect that, that this schedule will be in effect until the end of the school year? Are they still thinking that there's a chance that they'll be back five days a week?
Well, we're at the point where it needs to be communicated, which is why I intend to follow up with, with parents. But, um, like Lincoln and Rams have basically indicated, you know, look, you might as well plan on this for the duration of second try um, or the next, you know, month or two months. So it's not as though, we want to position ourselves so if we go back to five day a week, it's, it's, people are like aware, but it, it wouldn't be something like, oh, hey, three months from now, we're going to be five days a week because no one can tell you that, right? But on the same hand, parents know that the, um, AV cohort approach is at least for the, for the, you know, finite future. Meaning they're not longer, oh God, next week are we five days? You see what I'm saying? So that's a balance too. But frankly, we're at a point where, and here following break, uh, reviewing some kind of data around what case, uh, numbers look like for students and staff, I think that makes a lot of sense too. Which over this week and into next would kind of tell the tale of if we saw this massive spread once again from, from Christmas and, and New Year's. But, um, it's a perfect point to just kind of say, hey, parents, here's what we're seeing, here's what we've talked about, here's what we think we can do. And for the time being, this is what we're going to do, you know, in the short term and here's what we're going to do in the long term and try to provide some of those specifics. My only fear is that I don't know anything more than I know sitting here tonight and, you know, here we go again. Just provide more of the same and everybody's like, yeah, well, that's great, but, you know, I understand, but I don't know what we're supposed to do, you know? The schools that have gone five day a week, like Pittsville shifted to five day a week, six twelve for their kids. That was relatively recent here, I think shortly before break they implemented that. I talked with their, Pittsville, of course, is a smaller with, you know, eight, nine hundred kids. Um, I talked to their superintendent who indicated that they can maintain six feet of physical distance among students and staff during the school day. To which I asked, how come you implemented that now then? Why'd you do that in the first place? And I think their, their, uh, response was more along the lines of we wanted to see how things were going to go and handle it, you know, the safest manner possible from the front end. In our regard, like I said, Lincoln High School and Rams, you got fifteen hundred kids at Lincoln, fourteen hundred walking the whole school between bells. Lunchtimes before school, after school. What ends up happening is you get a positive and now you have, you create more close contacts or worse yet, you identify, you can't identify people that have come into contact with that positive. And now you do have a problem. You know, you do have a, a significant spike in cases due to school. And, um, I'm not sitting here telling you that's going to happen. I'm just saying that could. And that's the balance. And those are kind of the, the minutia we intend to discuss tomorrow morning. And like I said, I'll communicate what I know as soon as, uh, we have anything of substance.
Wasn't it?
Go ahead.
Wasn't it at the end of that podcast where they said because of the mask wearing, the distancing and hand washing, the flu has not been an, any consequence as dear at all. It's almost nonexistent.
That's correct. Yeah. And just anecdotally, because I've, you know, in hearing that, I've talked to just folks that I know, not anything, you know, I haven't done any research sample, but uh, and myself personally, most of the time by now I've had something, you know, a couple of times where you don't feel totally good, right? Nothing big. You're not going to stay home necessarily, but a scratch, you throw in a little bit of a cough, you know, three days later, you're fine. Personally, I've, I've had nothing, self-inflicted issues, but nothing associated, nothing associated with, uh, with a virus or bacteria. And I, you know, clearly it's attributable to something. Um, spending more time in your office, uh, staring away, staying away from people, wearing masks, well, more frequent hand washing. Yeah. So I mean, clearly these things do work, but, yeah. So then there is that indirect benefit as well.
With the two doctors who are local and the health department, would they be trusted with advice to the staff if they had communicated with them?
Oh, absolutely. Without question. I mean, I, you know, you can't say that across the board a hundred percent, but, uh, they engaged. Boy, I don't know the number of meetings they jumped on with staff members, a lot, a lot, you know, by building or by level, uh, individually. Had email communications, gave out their own emails. And so, yeah, that went on for weeks and weeks. And Dr. Falk continues to collect some data from some of our buildings around masking compliance and, uh, outreach to staff. And that data is communicated back to staff and, and in there they have opportunities to raise concerns. And so it's been kind of a, a, a feedback possibility, feedback loop pretty much this entire school year so far.
I think it's important to remember, this is, uh, not a sprint, it's a marathon. We'll get close to the finish line. Let's not stop before we need to.
Right.
Because it's going to be very hard to keep masks on people once the thought in the community is we're safe. And, you know, teachers need to teach, not be policing masks on kids. And it's been working pretty well so far, so.
Well, that's the, the biggest thing that I have said anytime I possibly can, so I'll say it again now. Our kids have been unbelievable with helping us do this stuff. Unbelievable. I've been to Lincoln way less than normal, but every time I go, I have never seen a kid without a mask on. Never. Now, that's not saying some don't, because some don't. I get it. But we, we don't have those issues. And that, here's what we thought we were going to deal with constantly. So our kids have been beyond unbelievable.
Because it's not just about protecting the students and the staff, it's the community as well.
Absolutely.
We've got a lot of elderly people that have stayed home that, you know, are, are taking care of themselves. Last thing we need is to be putting them at risk because we feel like we need to have kids in the classroom two weeks sooner.
Right. And everybody is sick and tired of it. Uh, you know, I mean, that's, that, there's no other way to put it. It's, it's old and it's tiresome and I want to be done as much as anybody else.
The one, one point that I brought up to the people that have asked me about it and I said to them, I go, well, the schools take it seriously. That's the problem is, is our community isn't taking it seriously because Wood, Woodportage Marathon County is like the hotbed right now. Top twenty in the, in the country still of COVID cases. Um, so you got, if, if you want this, people have to take it seriously. I mean, I go to, drive, I drive by QuickTrip and I, or if I stopped during the morning, I'll easily see a half dozen people walk in with no masks. I mean, they just, and, and so that's the part of it is that the community has to take it seriously so that everybody else can benefit. And we can get our kids, because what happens is the kids take the mask. At school, they go home and their, their parents have been wearing the masks or have been out and then that's how the, you know, you don't get a contact. Because they're not getting, they're not getting the contacts at school. They're getting the contact, contacts out of school. So the kids are bringing to school or do have it and then, then, then you have to find that out. They're not getting it in the school. They're getting it from the community. So we have to have the community buy in so that we can get our kids back in school. We're trying to do our part. The doctors are trying to do their part. Community has to do their part.
Well said. Well said.
Are there any other information requests?
What information? Can we have a breakdown of our transportation costs last year compared to this year? Because they're not busing as many people on Wednesday, or unless we're maintaining what we paid last year, I don't know how that's working.
We're doing a, a somewhat decreased reimbursement for Wednesdays.
Okay.
Yep. A maintenance payment, as it were. I think we settled on eighty percent for that day, similar to what we did at the closure spring. Um, and Sandy, does it make some sense maybe to give you transportation contract costs for last year, um, full year and this year, full year? You want to wait and get that a little bit later or do you want to know now?
We can wait. But there is some accommodation made for our Wednesday.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Absolutely. And there's also, there's going to be some cost savings and less routes run as well. So they're not recouping a hundred percent of the costs necessarily. Yeah. So there'll be some differences, but I think too, we'll have to pull a, a year prior still to give us a good, maybe three-year trajectory of what it looked like over time. So.
Okay.
Plus, we probably don't have as, as many extracurricular buses in there.
Oh, for sure. Yep. Yep. So all things considered, and then also there's been, you know, a rate adjustment in there, maybe two, if I recall. But, yeah, we can pull that data. We'll get it to you out, but sometime this spring.
Okay.
You're, you're talking total transportation costs.
Yeah, just, you know. I would assume it was be lesser this year than last year.
It is.
Okay.
And we'd talk maybe the last three years then, this year, the year prior, the year prior to that. Because the, the last normal year would be two years ago now, just about. Yeah.
Anything else? Nothing. We can move on to the legislative agenda. So, what you got this month?
So this month, in terms of an update, it's a little bit of a, of a lighter agenda to look at, but we do have some pieces, um, state, stateside and, and some federal aspects to look at as well. Um, I'm going to start with late December and then I'll, I'll work to the most current news as of yesterday and today. Um, in late December, Speaker Robin Boss announced the Assembly Standing Committees, um, for the twenty-one, twenty-two legislative session. Um, no changes for the Assembly Committee on Education. Um, Speaker Boss has reappointed Representative Jeremy Thiesfeld of the Sondalak area and as chairman and Joel Kitchens as vice chairman. Um, Representative Thiesfeld has been chair of the Education Committee since the twenty-fifteen session. Um, so no changes, um, going forward in, in that committee, um, for this next session. The next thing to look at, um, is of the State House as well. Um, Assembly Republicans have introduced their first bill of the twenty-one, twenty-two legislative session, um, Assembly Bill One. This is their attempt at a COVID relief package. Um, this bill was on the fast track to passage, um, in part of, um, on the House side of things. It had a public hearing and vote in the Assembly Health Committee on January fifth. And the Assembly passed the bill, um, last Thursday, January seventh. Um, the proposal will now head to the State Senate where overall support is mixed. I know they're looking at, um, updating some provisions that they don't, they don't like how that House bill looks. Um, the State Senate is planning to hold a vote tomorrow, um, in their chamber on this bill. Um, it does include items Governor Evers does not support. Um, and WASBE states that it is likely headed for a veto, but time will tell what, what comes out of the Senate chamber tomorrow. The bill does include provisions related to education that WASBE supports, um, as well as three provisions that they do oppose based on their member-approved resolutions. WASBE does support the civil liability provisions piece of Assembly Bill One. The three, um, provisions that they cannot support is the virtual instructions to pupils aspect of the legislation. Um, they state this provision interferes with local control. The next provision is they are not supportive of the full-time open enrollment application process. Um, WASBE is concerned that this provision may cause certain districts to focus an inordinate amount of attention on the financial implications of expect, accepting full-time open enrollment students in pit districts against one another. And the third piece that they have concerns about, um, in this bill is the impact on interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities. WASBE believes that it should be up to the discretion of school boards to determine who is eligible to participate in athletics and other extracurricular activities offered by districts. Um, they have stated they oppose legislative attempts to regulate private organizations um, such as the WI AA by restricting school districts' ability to participate in the WI AA or activities unless they follow such legislative mandates. So that's out of the State House. Um, the one federal piece that I do want to look at, um, signed into law on December twenty-seventh was the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, twenty twenty-one. This was signed into law on December twenty-seventh and provides an additional fifty-four point three billion for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. According to figures released by the Department of Education, Wisconsin's allocation of funds is estimated to be slightly more than six hundred and eighty-six million. Six hundred and seventeen, roughly six hundred and seventeen point five million of this will be allocated to local school districts. As a general rule of thumb, districts should expect their allocations to be about four times greater than the allocations under the prior relief fund. As with the earlier CARES Act allocation, um, ten percent will be reserved for distribution by DPI. Um, presumably, as with the earlier DPI set aside, the distribution of these funds reserved to DPI will have to be approved by the Legislative's Joint Finance Committee, the Budget Writing Committee. And lastly, WASBE anticipates that the DPI will be releasing information on district-level allocations as well as additional guidance and instruction for school districts in the coming days. Looking, um, looking at the executive branch, Governor Tony Evers has two scheduled addresses, um, to take place. Tomorrow night, um, is scheduled the annual State of the State address beginning at seven o'clock. And on February sixteenth, um, Governor Evers is set to deliver his biennial budget address, um, at seven PM as well. Both of the addresses are set to be delivered virtually. Last week, the Wisconsin Public Education Network, um, hosted a Last week, the Wisconsin Public Education Network hosted a superintendent candidate forum. All seven of the candidates participated in the forum, and the forum is available on wisconsini.org. In terms of that race, if there's any developments, I will update you on February 8th going forward. But I urge you all to request an absentee ballot for the primary election on February 16th. And that is all that I have for this month.
All right, thank you, Troy. We can move on next to the bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as per second.
And John, with your question, that is their choice, Emmanuel Lutheran's choice. John had a question on a bill that's being paid on behalf of Emmanuel Lutheran for Central Wisconsin Janitorial Services, I think, $3,386 bucks, that's listed in the bills. That is how they're choosing to spend their Esser dollars, some of them, and we pay them on their behalf. Because much like their control, our, our control over Title I disbursement, and they, they can't make purchases and then seek reimbursement, we have to pay it on her behalf, that's what that is. And you're going to see that, I think, on a monthly basis. So I got the answer already.
Thank you. And I guess a couple of things jumped out at me when I was looking at this. We have three private donations, Joseph and Catherine Robbender, Jack Kibowski, Chiropractic and Seams Repair for House School, Fayed Skis. We have a Wisconsin Rapids Hometown Pharmacy donation of a Roundup customer. And we also had Palder Williams Plumbing and Heating and Jacob Searls Cranberry that have donated contributions to the quadplex. So I think it's worth noting that we have members of our community that step in. We're need-be, so much appreciated.
Still second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, that the receipts be noted and bills paid this spring. We have a roll call, please, Marine.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Bemmo?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. We can move on to unfinished old business. First item, discussion and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $2 million per year for five years, beginning with the 2021, 22 fiscal year for non-recurring purposes.
Yep, so that is as discussed. The first resolution would be to oppose the question of voters' levy limit override of $2 million per year, per year for five years. And we'll go through that, so I don't have to talk over each one of these. The next one is the same request, but for a $34 million bond issue question. The $34 million bond issue question entails renovation to district facilities, making them secure, directing all visitors into the office before access to any other areas, areas of the building. Science and Media Center renovations at Lincoln High School, as well as the addition of a gym at Think Academy, which is Rudolph Elementary, one in the same. And Item C then, basically says, hey, look, you've adopted these resolutions above, now you need to say, put this on the ballot. So Item C is, is the next legal step the board needs to take. A third resolution to provide for the referendum election of the prior two questions.
So we have to do A and B, or do we just do C?
You do A, and B, and C, to be compliant.
Individually.
Individually, that's correct. Yep.
Well, we've had several meetings on this, so I think we know where we're at.
Yep.
I'll motion to approve the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limits by $2 million per year for five years, beginning with 2021, 22 fiscal year for non-recurring purposes.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $2 million per year for five years, beginning with the 2021, 22 fiscal year for non-recurring purposes. Do we have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Bemmo?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mr. Crane's?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Then I'd make a motion to approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $34 million.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve an initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $34 million. Do we have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Crane's?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Bemmo?
Yes.
Then I'd make a motion to approve of a resolution providing for a referendum election on the questions of approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $2 million per year for five years for non-recurring purposes, and an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $34 million.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second, to approve a resolution providing for referendum election on the questions of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $2 million per year for five years for non-recurring purposes, and an initial res- resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $34 million. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Medina? Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Crane's?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Bemmo?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. Now we can move on to new business. Possible action on employee appointments, resignations, retirement requests, right, everyone?
We do not.
Okay. Item B, discussion and possible action to approve an amendment to the 2020, 21 district budget.
Before that happens, I just wanted to mention, I think, Myron is your...
Oh, yeah, I totally forgot. I was just looking at the switch.
Well, I, I didn't want to, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm staying online.
No, that, and that's bizarre, because I was looking at it, and as you're doing, I'm like, yeah, I didn't say something.
I didn't want to stay online.
I didn't say anything. It's not like me to not say anything. So included for you on behalf of Myron and the referendum support services they offer are a couple of things. The larger page that you see is a sheet that is basically like a timeline of a communication plan. We met for a kickoff meeting last week Friday, and we are now going to meet every two weeks to have conversations on a similar topic, including kind of vetting materials and, you know, talking about what we're doing and when and where. So that's that, gives you that basic understanding. Because they're nice people, they also provided you some of these referendum guidelines. Very similar, if not almost identical, to the stuff I forwarded you from Corals and Brady, who is the law firm that supports the organization through this referendum process in terms of compliance. And then lastly, the, there's a PowerPoint with regard to, well, this is the basis of our conversation at our kickoff meeting from last week Friday around what our overall strategy and plan happens to be with communicating specifics around the referendum. And Craig's here on behalf of Myron to answer any questions that you might have. But real quick, as I indicated, we're going to meet every couple of weeks. We're going to develop media, both in terms of print media to communicate with the public, video, you know, short, I'm going to call them commercials, as it were, or info, information, infomercials to be shared. We've talked too about what this interface is going to look like given the pandemic. We think that utilizing the PAC as a, as an example is going to be a wise choice, because you can do it in person, because it could house 800 people, and we're not clearly going to have anywhere near that show up. But we could accommodate many and still physically distance. We can record a presentation along those lines, live stream it, and record it at the same time. Use that to get the post on the website and send to anybody that might be interested in a very similar thing, presentation by myself and, you know, potentially others. And then, of course, do outreach with local groups, local charitable foundations and organizations, local business groups, local municipalities, around how we get the word out about specifics on the referendum. And, and all of this kind of comes to fruition and occurs over the next few months here. And each step of anything notable, very clearly you folks will be, you know, in the know and in the loop and, and encouraged and welcome to attend any events that we're having in person. So that was my thing. Craig, if there's anything you'd like to add, certainly if you can, and I, I was, I was forgetting to do it after looking at it 10 seconds earlier.
No, I think Craig, Craig did a great job of sort of summarizing everything. So again, there's a very strategic plan, you know, like a lot of different pieces that'll continue here. The first, you know, couple of weeks is really just developing the, the strategy and the branding and so forth, and then sort of develop the pieces and the content. And as that stuff is created, Craig and Marine will continue to share that with the board, so that you're seeing everything that, that's going to be presented to the community. So, yeah, it's, again, I didn't want to take a lot of time tonight, so feel free to read that, you know, look through it. And if you have any questions or want additional information, just continue to communicate with Craig and Marine, because they're going to be in the thick of it with us. And again, we, we base this off of what we typically do with districts. There's always things that are customized for the district. But you also know the district better than, than any of us. So if there's certain things throughout this process that you see or hear about that you think that we should be doing, you know, please reach out to Craig and Marine again and let them know, and we'll jump on it.
That's a great point. So anything that we're creating and sending your way or drafts of anything, and if there's something that comes to your mind, oh, hey, have you thought of this group, or hey, have you talked to that person, certainly send it our way.
The only other thing I would just say on the do's and don'ts, it's a simple answer that I give to the school board, especially if you haven't been through this process before. You know, it's the difference between advocating and just informing people. Just always think about it whenever you're in a district function, at a district board meeting, at a district event, you can never advocate, you're just providing information. But you as board members, but also as taxpayers and residents, if, you know, John's out on a Friday night with some friends for dinner, John has every right to advocate or say how he feels, you know, about the referendum, and how he's going to vote or she's going to vote. So I don't ever want you to be scared that you can't talk about it, it's just you have to know the confines of what you're in. You know, when you're in a district role, it's informational. When you're on your own time, you can feel free to, you know, state anything you want about the referendum.
So if we had a big vote yes button, we couldn't wear it here, believe it or not, when we leave?
Correct, yeah, that's another example, right. Don't be wearing it as you're walking in here, but the second you leave, you can put it on, uh, put it back on again.
Gotcha.
Yep.
We had to get a washer and dryer this year, and I was surprised what little was available. And I bought an elliptical for my wife as well, and I had to go up to Wausau and pick it up. They wouldn't save it for me, it was going to be gone before I got there, if I didn't get there. Do you see any other shortages of materials or et cetera?
Oh, you're saying, so I was, I was trying to relate that to the reference. But I, we could say this once we get into the construction phase.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you buy things that are going to be short or not.
Yeah, so, I mean, when it comes, again, if the referendum is successful, which again, we're hoping and assuming that everybody's going to support it, and we get into that next phase, then we start talking about that. Quite honestly, when it comes to construction, there isn't really, hasn't been a lot, a lot of shortages per se. I mean, sometimes there's some long lead items, like sometimes, you know, sometimes you see doors or windows, things like that. But the nice thing about your process of this referendum is that, you know, when the referendum passes, you don't start construction the next day. We have to give Steve Keke from PRA time to do design. So during that design process, we start to work with Ed and the team to look at some of those long lead items. And if there is things that, that are looking to be out there ways, we can just preorder some of those things, so that when we're ready for construction to start, we have the materials.
Yes, this will be done in phases for sure.
Yeah.
So this isn't going to be, if this passes, this isn't going to be like a solid project and all the stuff is done. It'll be over the next few years.
That's all I have, unless you have any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep. And again, Marine, thank you very much for, for your moment. So I can still see all, maybe kickoff's a couple minutes away. Okay, thanks, everybody, again, we look forward to working with you and spending the next 12 weeks, so. And the other thing I just was going to start too, and just say congratulations on it being unanimous. So I don't know if we talked about that in the interview process, but when we work with a school district, I mean, that's huge. I mean, but now, when we market this and start to talk to the community, I mean, that's one of the things we're going to say, that this was a unanimous decision by the board. That's huge, that's important, because, you know, there are some times where there's districts that aren't unanimous, and that just becomes confrontational from day one. So to have a united front in the community is huge, so congratulations on that.
Thank you, Craig.
Yep.
Okay, now we can talk about the amendment to the 2020, 21 district budget.
If you remember, Steve, seven months ago, it seems like a long time ago, the board approved a, a limited budget, and if you have your sheet in front of you, it's the first column, it says projected 2021 budget. That comes from that June meeting, and we were just putting numbers together. It came, we were in the middle of, we were, the pandemic had started, and we're in the middle of trying to move the budget for this year. Well, now we, we've been into this year for a number of months now, six months, exactly. And we have a much better idea of our funding for this year. We know what our legalization aid is, you know, what our tax rate is going to be. We have all that kind of information, and we're recommending that you actually adopt. Now, this, this will be the budget that the auditors work off of, when they come in for their audit at the end of the year. Adopt the new budget, and it's also, this is also the numbers we're filing with DPI, so I do hope that you adopt. I don't know if it's numbers. But anyway, I'm going to just point out some of the big things. On the front, the big number there under state sources, if you look in the difference column, That's, most of that is an increase in state aid. So because of that, the tax levy went, the tax levy in the general fund went, went down. You see, went down $650,231. Most of that decrease in that, on that line is from the decrease in the tax levy. But overall, our revenue went up $1,574,116. Revenue, this is in the general fund, font ten. Below that, you'll see the expenditures, you'll see a number of changes in budget amounts going all the way down to, from undifferent curriculum all the way down to school building administration. Basically, that was changes in staffing, retirements, new hires, people moving around the district. The big, the biggest change then, you'll see there, is in business administration. It looks like a huge increase, but in looking back, the number is $70,000 more than our budget last year in school business administration. Then you'll see that below that, we're buying a new phone system, some other numbers. And then the big number, the biggest number there, the $1,861,709, that's to pay off the last payment on the middle school. You had, you had one payment coming due this year, and then there's one, there was one more payment due, and I'm, we're going, we're proposing to pay that off, both of those payments this year. That will pay off the middle school in its entirety. And the reason I decided to do that is because we had that big increase in our revenue, and so we were able to do that. So you'll see that the increase in expenditures and the increase in revenue are pretty close to each other from what we're, we're budgeting. Then there's some other things we had to change, we had to, the $26,000 is something we had to designate in fund balance. It's a carryover of our Common School Fund. We got a big influx of additional money in Common School Fund the last school year. We were unable to spend all of it by the, by the end of June, and so we were required by statute to report that as a, designate that as a restricted fund balance to be used for Common School Fund, which is for the library of media materials. And then, once we closed out last year, sometime September, after the audit was done, our, our fund balance was actually higher than we were projecting, we had budgeted for last year. And so that's where you see that our ending fund balance, our total ending fund balance from what we had budgeted in June and for last year is increased by $2,426,000. So we're up to $13 million, which means we do not, we have not short-term borrowed for the last two years now, and it looks like for the future, we will no longer be doing any short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes.
About how much was your interest savings paying off that middle school debt early?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't give a question.
About how much interest did we save paying off the middle school debt, or just round figures?
I think it was like $50,000.
Oh, okay.
And in this, in this rate where the interest rates are really low, that's a, that's a significant amount.
Okay.
Okay, that, that's font ten. And then below that, we have a special projects fund, which is special projects, our special education fund, and our Native American fund for Fund 29. Both of those are decreasing revenue, but it's also a decrease in our expenditures there. Both of those are decreasing revenue, but it's also a decrease in our expenditures there from what we had originally budgeted. Looking to the backside, we have the referendum debt service fund. Oh, actually, it's both, both referendum and the, the other debt service fund, Fund 38, 39, we were able to refinance the energy notes. We borrowed money for the energy project that we were allowed to do. With, with the interest rates environment we are in now, we're able to refinance at a much lower rate. And so we had to show that we paid that off and got new debt. And so that's why that, that increased there. And we were able to restructure the debt so that, because we had a big savings by refinancing the debt, we have a lower payment for next year and the following year. And then, and because it was energy debt, we're not allowed to shorten the duration of the debt. They won't allow that. So we, we still end up paying it out and on the same timeline as we did before, so we have a big reduction next year and the following year. So that should help with any referendum financing. There should not be any impact on the levy, at least that's the idea, that it was designed so that there would be no impact on our tax levy as a result of the referendum. Following that is capital sinking fund. We have $1,009,000, we had $1,009,000 at the beginning of the year on that. And I just show us, being able to spend $1,006,000 if we need to, if we don't need to, it'll just stay in that fund. But I put $1,006,000 in there with really no idea on what it might be. But any of the capital projects that we have listed could be, this money could be used for that purpose. Capital projects fund, the next one is Fund 49. When we did the budget for this year in June, we didn't know exactly, we, we just, I prepared that budget before we made the final, we made the payment in June. There was a payment that came in at the end of June, that wasn't in the, wasn't in that part of the budget. So that payment was made and then, so you see a big decrease there from what we had budgeted in June to what we actually paid out. That project now is totally paid off and there's no more funds left in Fund 49. That's the energy project. So the amount we had to pay this year on that project was $747,000. So we had a big decrease there in that budget. Any questions on that? Okay, food service fund. What should have happened there but didn't, but there should also been an increase in the revenue. But anyway, there's a, largely that fund balance to cover, so we don't have, it doesn't show a deficit, but we're getting a substantial increase in the federal, federal money for food service. So that, that's the big increase, that $456,000 in expenditures. All students are eating free breakfast and free lunch. So that's additional expenditures. But there will be, we have enough fund balance to cover all that, but we should also be getting some additional revenue. That's not quite fair. And we'll probably be, we'll probably budget, we'll bring that forward as a budget adjustment later on this, well, Aaron should bring that forward later on, is he or something?
That's money from the federal government, correct?
It'll be coming from the federal government, yes.
It's part of the CARES Act, which gives everybody free breakfast and lunch.
Then we have the Employee Benefit Trust, nothing, nothing big there, and then the Community Service Fund. You'll see a big increase in the tax levy and also a large expenditure budget. That'll only be spent if there's a project that can be funded with, with those funds. And that is the budget limit. And this will be the budget that the auditors actually work off of and it's already been submitted to the chair.
If there are no other questions, I move to approve the amendment of the 2120 district budget as presented. And I'd like to second John Bembel's comments.
We got to one at a time. We got to one at a time.
I know. I'll second your comments about, about our Dan, Dan the man. Unlike a lot of accounting people, you think independently and creatively, out of the box.
Is that a good thing?
It is.
That's excellent thing.
And that's enabled us to do some things that were very successful and I, and I appreciate that. And I, I think it's, it's an uncommon thing, so I'd like to call attention to it when I can.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Oh, I don't, was that a motion?
Yep. Well, all of it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the 2020-21 district budget as presented. Do you have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
And I too would like to say thank you, Dan. It's been a pleasure working with you all these years and you will be missed. Aaron, you've got some work to do, but I'm sure you'll be fine, but we wish you the best in your retirement and may it be all a happy one.
Thank you, John.
Okay, the next item is discussion and possible action on the WASB resolutions.
So you were provided the WASB resolutions, most of them upon review pertain to a number of things in relation to pandemic, such as pupil count, pupil count mitigation from last year to this as a result of decreased enrollment in many schools across the state and a number of other things and frankly, fewer this year than there has been in past years. And there's very few that upon review you look at and say, well, this is only specific to this one district or this, you know, this unique circumstance. A perennial favorite that is back again is the penny, the penny for kids approach, a resolution to increase sales tax by a penny to be put into a fund for building, school building improvements throughout the state. That's penned by Hudson. Hudson Superintendent is from Iowa and Iowa implemented something along those lines several years ago and according to him, it works really well. So that, I think, is where, it came from Hudson School District and that has been on the docket in the last couple. But as I said, most of the other resolutions so most directly pertain to our current state of affairs is the zone of the pandemic and there's our, there are proportionally fewer than there have been in past years. I think there's only what, three, three, four pages of them?
Only 10 total.
Yeah, 10 total.
Usually there's about 18 and 20.
I just think the 10th one about the school mascot, I think that's a lawful issue. I don't think that...
Well, I was just going to hit the, the one cent tax was on the last two years. The mascot thing has been on the last two years and if you recall, when we made our changes, there was legislation put into effect, both that, state and national. So these both have been kicked out because you, exactly what you just said, that was my argument too, last year is that there's a handful of districts that this affects and it's already basically been taken care of through legislature. So it's now, you know, it's up to the school districts to do their, their thing. If you want to keep making this, this requirement, I don't know. So that was the only one, and actually I think it's modifying a previous resolution as well, because it's already in the resolution book. But yeah, other than that, I mean, so basically that one and that one, so there's literally eight new ones. There must, two of them from last year.
And that's going to occur virtually this year?
It is going to be virtual. I can't imagine how, how many, I mean, there's typically 200, 300 people that...
Yeah.
So how do we do that on Zoom? I don't know.
It's going to be a lot of squares.
Yeah, a lot of squares and I don't know, they're going to, man, they're going to have like 65 inch TV this evening.
I'm not going to watch, but it's been twice as long.
Should be interesting.
Yeah, I'm not looking forward to that. I've only had two hours of my life.
Or more. I would move to having John Bembel use his own discretion, recreate it out of blocks and vote his conscience on behalf of the board on proposed WASB resolutions when participating as a board delegate in the upcoming delegate assembly meeting in January 21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve having John Bembel use his own discretion and vote his conscience on behalf of the board on proposed Wisconsin Association of School Boards resolutions when participating as the board delegate at the upcoming delegate assembly meeting in January 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item tonight is discussion and possible action to approve proposal to contract with US Square Incorporated at a cost of $15,000 to create and support district equity-related services.
Well, John, I can speak to that a little bit. So as the board notes, the district has been identified the last two years as having what's called significant disproportionality in special education. And so as part of that work, we're required to put together an action plan that VPI approves, so we're continuing to move that forward. So for about the last year, Craig, Sarah Collo, our equity coordinator and myself had been working with Midwest Equity Center out of Indiana University and they've been great. However, their work with us has been very philosophical. So we're kind of reaching to the point now where we want the rubber to hit the road and we really want to start putting into action the things that we're talking about. So Sarah and I searched out some organizations that we felt could help us do that. And so US Two is the organization that we kind of landed on. And so you have a, a copy of the exact contract that they shared with us, but we are, we would like to enter into a contract with them to support our equity through the following ways. So provide coaching and leadership support for both Sarah and I as we work with our equity committee to make changes, systematic changes across the district. They would provide professional development for both administrators and staff on bias and education. And then Sarah would complete a certification process, it's called PAIR, I apologize, I forget what the exact acronym stands for, but it's a credential for action planning and building diversity, equity and inclusion in schools. And then, well, the full details of the contract just came in, so we apologize that we couldn't through business services, so that's why I'm breaking into it.
It's been interesting what Sarah has shared with the board in our emails when you start looking at some of that. You realize that you are a person of privilege.
Yeah.
You don't work yourself that way because that's just probably what you always don't.
Yeah. Sarah's doing, I sort of put a plug in for Sarah, she's doing a phenomenal job.
And this will be carved notice of flow-through?
Yes.
As a result of dollars sequestered because of this identification?
Correct. Yeah, we're required to set aside 15% of our flow-through dollars to spend on equity initiatives, so the money would come from our flow-through dollars, so.
I think it's coming at a pretty good time with the NFL and the basketball association, especially our Wisconsin Bucks showing some courage in that area. And it's something to add on to, that we can do it and we need to do it.
And there's something to add here?
Just a quick note, DCR is going through the exact same thing that you guys are going through and we're, we're revising our budgets, building our budgets and it's just a lot of work and there are a lot of, a lot of work on your behalf to, to meet those new regulations. So I would suspect that a lot of districts, if we, neighboring districts are going through it, that this is commonplace for many districts throughout the state of Wisconsin.
Oh, absolutely is.
I would motion to approve of a proposal to contract with US Two Incorporated at a cost of $15,000, or us to me, at a cost of $15,000 to create and support district, district equity-related services.
We have a motion and a second to approve a proposal to contract with US Two Incorporated at a cost of $15,000 to create and support district equity-related services. Do we have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryle?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. With that, we move on to our calendar. It's not noted on here, but there is a PSC meeting on January 18th. And with that, we're adjourned.